Seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call the Pelham School Committee meeting to order at 6:30 PM.
Okay. So, our first item is to approve regional and Pelham clerical and para-merit awards? Do we have a list?
If you scroll, oh.
Why is this not? Oh, yeah. I literally moments ago sort of added the names to the list.
Well, I'm unable to log you.
Right, but both of these said, both of these say "meeting opening," which is not.
Close and open it again.
Yeah, because mine doesn't have that.
Oh, mine does.
No, mine has this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, gotcha.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
I think my connection to the wifi was suspect, so.
That happens to me all the time. You just have to keep trying over and over again.
There's the list of names.
Thank you.
What's more worth feeling here?
Oh, there we go, okay. I'll lock the bear, it's bigger.
Much better, okay. So, if you'd like, I can start on this?
Yes.
So, merit awards, so we have, and I listed the Amherst Award winners as well here, just because it was easier in the minute I had before I put this up, before coming over. Even though by virtue of a bit of a scheduling struggle, we didn't get the Amherst meeting posted in time, that was, you know, the town, once a year closes, maybe twice a year closes at noon, to do something for the staff in the town hall, and, well, last Friday was that time, so we didn't get the Amherst meeting posted. Nonetheless, we have here for you the Para-educator Merit Awardees for Amherst Pelham and Region. That's a new award this year that was negotiated in the contract that we ratified earlier in the year. We have had also a clerical merit award for a number of years, and those awardees are also here, and so, you know, we're really thankful for all of these people and the work that they do for our district, and the tremendous efforts that they make on behalf of kids. And we, you know, the interesting thing with the Para-educator Merit Awards, it was our first, first time doing it, we had up to nine that we could give out, I think we got, I forget how many now, Debbie had the statistics on this, but, you know, pretty strong response, which was nice. It's a way to, you know, acknowledge and recognize some staff for the work they do, and it's a tremendous opportunity to kind of share this with you all and with the broader community about some of the folks that work in our district in sometimes quieter ways or much less well-known ways. Similarly with our clerical awards, again, we've had this for a number of years, and yet it's still always an opportunity to thank those folks in a significant way here in public as to the efforts they make on behalf of the kids in our districts. And so I think that, you know, there are a couple of simple motions here to accept those recipients. And there's a small cash award for all these folks as well, and I think it's one of the real joys of Debbie's work to go through these and share with some of you who help on the selection committee to identify these award winners. But it's that sort of time of year that we get the opportunity to kind of thank people, so this is one of the ways we do that.
I don't think it's proper for us to vote the Amherst.
It's not, I just left him in for the sake of simplicity, but we'll do that next time.
Next week.
Yep.
It's great.
And I think it's going to be different motion, so you can just read the motion line and then the list of people, and that would be probably the way to do it.
Well, since Pelham's after Amherst, I would move to approve the Para-educator Merit Award to Beata Cecilsk. Not sure how to pronounce that.
She goes, "I miss Beata at school." Miss Beana at school.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right, thank you.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to say that I'm the school committee member that's on the committee along with Debbie Westmoreland and Damani, who's going to be taking over for her, as well as an APA member, and we read all of the submissions and we met to discuss them, and it was wonderful. I mean, I think there were at least twenty nominations for para, sorry, twenty nominations for clerical and like thirty-four nominations for para, and it was so heartwarming, and many of the award winners and many of the nominees were nominated by more than one person, and there were some individuals who nominated themselves more than one person. It was just, it's the best subcommittee assignment, so thank you for giving me a subcommittee assignment, it's wonderful, because as you all probably know, we hear, we hear, often hear negative things about the district, and it's so wonderful to just be in a position to hear about all these wonderful things that are happening in our district, so I really appreciate that. And I will move to approve the Para-educator Merit Awardees for the region Ahmed Berrios Cieja Crouch and Violetta Hernandez.
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you.
And I will further move to approve the Clerical Merit Awardees for the region Nidalia Lozado, Lori Peterson, and Kristen Fadet.
Second.
Excellent. All in favor? These are fantastic. Not only, I can only imagine how fun it is to read all of those, but I love that we get to also like say thank you and just recognize what hard work, you know, all the grownups put in to the kids' experience, so, thank you to everyone.
So, you want me to introduce this one as well?
Sure.
So, one of the sort of four areas that school committees have is the approval of the certain positions in the district, so they hire a superintendent, but they approve the Student Services Director, Finance Director, or Business Official, and the Assistant Superintendent if that position is filled. And so, we have, and I think I've told you about this a while ago, and we haven't done the formal sort of step, which, so Doreen Reed has accepted the position to take over for Paver when she retires, so Doreen is going to be in that position. And so this gives you the opportunity to formally adopt Doreen as our Student Services Director, which is a title that actually comes as special education, which is a specific task the school committee has, but it's a broader set of responsibilities that she will carry with this. Again, I put the Amherst one on there, it'll carry over to next time when Amherst meets next week, but there are two motions there for you guys to approve that position placement.
So, I would, I'll make a motion to appoint Doreen Reed, Assistant Director of Services for the Pelham Elementary School.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
I guess I'll make another motion to approve the appointment of Doreen Reed as Assistant Director of Services for the Amherst Pelham Regional School District.
Second.
Is that you, Anna?
Yeah.
All in favor? Excellent.
Can I ask you a question? So, Doug, and when I, whenever I read about the list of positions that the school committee's supposed to approve, it also says nurses and doctors, as long as they're not employees of the Department of Health, which I don't believe ours are, but I don't think I've ever heard of a school committee, I don't think we have doctors, I don't think I've ever heard of a school committee appointing a nurse, and surely we've hired one. Do you happen to know?
I've never seen that as something you guys have to approve. I mean, a doctor I can understand, but a nurse I find really quite odd, because to be a nurse, that's a teaching position, it's in our teaching unit, but it requires a state license, and so, you know, go through the regular process, but.
We can talk offline, I'll send you what I've seen.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, I've not, I've seen the others, I haven't seen that one, but that could be buried somewhere in, and it may be, we need to do that. Never seen it, but I don't have all knowledge of all things, for sure.
No? Okay, so, next up is Superintendent's presentation of artifacts for evaluation.
So, I'll keep this fairly brief, let me open this up, actually, I, so I will admit, and hopefully, Ms. Westmoreland's been out of the office the last two days, and so that's why some of these things got posted literally five minutes ago, because I was like, oh, wait, we haven't got those things attached to the agenda, which is oftentimes the kind of detail she'll chase down for us, so unfortunately, these things didn't get attached until recently, literally minutes ago. Nonetheless, there's a little introductory letter here and then a series of documents that are linked to this document, and you should be able to get to those, and hopefully you've received this a few days ago and have had opportunity to look at it. You know, this is by, you know, as it describes in the cover letter, you know, it's not the exhaustive list of all things that have been done, and certainly, I don't want to claim that I personally did all of this work all by myself, that's not the way it works. Most of this work is done by a whole group of people that put together various components or carry the lion's share of this, and so I want to be very clear and very appreciative of all that work, of all those staff. Some of that work is stuff that's not seen, you know, in hard documentation, but nonetheless is part and parcel of what makes our district run, and so we were able to a minute ago with the Para-educator Award and the Merit Award for Clerical to acknowledge a few of those staff that helped make this operation run and run smoothly and run well. You know, the things that end up in the sort of public realm are often where people have concerns or problems or issues or questions about the district, and there's a lot of really great stuff happening all the time. When we get to Superintendent's report, I'll talk about a couple of those things, but I did want to share this document with you, we've laid it out with each of the goals and some accompanying documentation that sort of supports each of those goals, and then at the end, there are a few other documents that Ms. Westmoreland helped compile and some notations about the work this year. And hopefully that'll be a good framing of some of the things that have happened and the work we've done collectively to try to move the district forward this year. And so, I will just share with you a couple of things from each of those that I want to point out, some are more extensive, so things like in Goal One, there's a much more extensive list of things we've done and actions we've taken, and, you know, trainings we've done, et cetera, et cetera. And a series of artifacts that accompany that, and hopefully will give you a sense of the efforts we've made, and by no means is this exhaustive, there are other things that have happened in a much more subtle and specific way at the building levels and in day-to-day operation and day-to-day work that our teachers and faculty and staff work with kids on a regular basis to connect and each other and have those conversations about how we interact with one another and work to support each other. In Goal Two, which is budget planning, there won't be anything in that set of artifacts that you haven't seen and probably spent a fair amount of time with over the last several months, so I doubt there's any real surprises or questions there. And so, I think on Goal Three, though, one thing I will share, there's a, it spoke a little bit to the regional agreement, and looking at that, there were two things that I wanted to do with regard to the regional agreement, some of it was relative to thinking about the sixth grade moving up to the middle school and sort of, is that an option to sort of include the Amherst sixth grade into the regional agreement or not? It's not really an option, so that I'll share with you for those of the region that haven't heard this conversation, whereas the Amherst School Committee has. And we looked over sort of, you know, what the state often finds with regional agreements is that they were written a long time ago and they haven't always been regularly updated, and there's components that are missing or not quite in order. I did check in with the state on some of that, we're actually not in too bad a shape, there's a few things we need to tidy up a little bit, nothing major, I mean, you know, I think I would be remiss, the town councilors would scold me if I didn't mention that we do need to change the wording relative to the Amherst Town Government, because the government changed in the last six years and that would need to be updated. But that's, it doesn't functionally change the agreement or how it works, and so I think it's still okay, even though it references like Select Board, even though it's Town Council and Select Boards. But there are a few things we could do relative to that, I think that the other thing I will say, you know, just talking about sixth grade moving to the middle school, there's a lot of planning that needs to happen around that, and it does impact and have interaction with the region, and it will be, you know, an ongoing bit of planning work that we're going to do over the next couple of years as we work through this. The short story is we can't add, well, shouldn't speak in such absolutes. Adding a single town for a single grade to the regional agreement is extraordinarily complicated and difficult, and the lens that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education takes is one of, does this have a positive impact on all the kids? You know, is it equitable, does it improve educational outcomes, that's the sort of lens that they bring to it. To make that kind of addition to the regional agreement with, in this format of a single grade level for a single town would require special legislation. There's one other district that they could quote that has that, but it's really, it's a different circumstance, and it is a circumstance different from this, and it also benefited those students to do that, to have special legislation. So, it's technically difficult to do and not one that is likely to get much support from the, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, because it doesn't really necessarily provide better educational outcomes for all, and so that's a lens they'll take to it. That being said, you know, might we have conversations about regional agreements in the future? Absolutely, that's an ongoing, I think, thing we all should look at and think about, and if we were to come into a deeper conversation about that over the coming years, you know, we'll know, we'll have to fine tune a few pieces of our regional agreement. But nonetheless, there are a couple of things there that I shared, more of that is for the Amherst folks, but there are some things that also play into the regional, the regional review of the artifacts as well. In Goal Four, which is really highly focused on mathematics and the mathematics curriculum, there's a ton of curriculum work we've done over the course of years, we've had a couple of different presentations at both the Regional School Committee and the Elementary School Committees, I think the I-rated curriculum is in its second year, I think we're really happy with the progress that has been made, both in the implementation of that, but also the outcomes and results we're seeing. I think that, you know, the faculty are feeling more and more comfortable with it and having, you know, good success with it, so I think that, you know, is encouraging. Like I said, we have some other curricular initiatives that we're working on and chipping away at, and, you know, and trying to do that at a pace that will be manageable for everyone, and at the same time, you know, tend to those needs we have in curriculum areas, and that's, you know, K to twelve, pre-K to twelve in that regard. And again, I want to, you know, really congratulate the folks, you know, faculty that have been taking on, you know, new things and integrating that into their day-to-day work, as well as those people in our curriculum roles, Mary Kylie and Stephanie, I'm drawing a complete blank. I can't believe I just went blank on Stephanie's last name. I can see her face and I cannot think of her name, speaks to how tired I am this evening, but nonetheless, I'm really embarrassed by that, but nonetheless, they've done tremendous work for the district to kind of support the teachers, get them the materials they need, continue to provide information, and work with the state on various initiatives that they have and leverage those things. At the secondary level, we've done a fair amount of work, especially early this year, there was a pretty strong initiative held by department heads at the secondary, but in concert with the curriculum leaders at the middle school to, you know, do alignment work, seven to twelve regarding curriculum across all areas. I think there were some areas that were much more aligned than others, and there's some deep conversations, particularly around math, around how we, you know, approach and think about algebra in eighth grade, how we select kids for that, how we map kids through the various choices that they have, how to be thoughtful and give kids the best opportunity for success, whatever that might be in mathematics, but I think they've also, you know, spent a fair amount of time looking at other areas and other curriculum as well to align that sort of coherent sort of approach to academics in the regional district. This primarily, like I said, focuses on mathematics, but nonetheless, there's been work in that area and across all subjects in the secondary level. The last thing I'll talk about is some other things that we put together for you, there's a number of things we could do here, we've reinvested in professional development work and a Professional Development Committee to have conversations about that, put some materials together for teachers to. put some materials together for teachers to, you know, understand and guide them through the work they need to do to get, renew or enhance their licensure. Also, just generally improve their practice. As we talked about this spring, we've talked about this Student Opportunity Act planning that we've done. We'll do some more deeper dive in that over the next coming, you know, over the next year or so. But that's a start. There's a lot of things there that we could do more on. But nonetheless, that's, you know, a level of work we've done to dig into that need and to, you know, sort of meet the requirement of the state, but also to think about some initial steps in what would be a deeper district improvement planning process that we'll probably undertake in the short term. Obviously, for Amherst, we've got a construction project, but it has impact on our third two districts as well. So that's part of why a traffic pattern is pretty important because, you know, anybody that either drives to, you know, any of the schools that has to, you know, work their way through that construction zone and navigate that twice a day, it's important we communicate well. And hopefully, we did a good job. I've not heard much as far as pushback on that. So I think our planning around that for both the school itself, but then also its impact on Pelham and its impact on the regional schools. Hopefully, we've done a good job and we're not seeing huge amounts of backup there. But it's an indication of other work we're doing in a sort of facilities way to make sure that we're attending to things as best we can while we do improvements in our districts. And then the last thing on here, and this is, you know, just an indication of there's, you know, this is one piece of things that we're working with that come up and are part and parcel of, you know, the work this year. And we'll be continuing work as we go through the next couple of years. The impacts of what was happening about a year ago and the fallout in some respects of that is something we continue to have to work through. And some of that's, you know, in goal one, where we talk about sort of how we're approaching, making sure we're creating a welcoming and, you know, space for all students and all staff and create an environment where everyone can have success. And it also has this sort of other side where, as we took various personal actions and looked at ourselves closely and took into account the things that transpired last year, that, you know, we have some residual complicating factors that we have to work through. And they take a long, long time, and so we're still in process on those. And so I think, you know, it's just a mention of the work that's in that area and that we'll continue to have in that area. So I didn't want to leave that out. And it can kind of disappear from your mind because it's not something that, because it's so personnel-related a lot of times and, you know, it's not things we can discuss publicly, so we don't. And it can be kind of forgotten that there's time and attention that needs to go to that. And I'm not the only staff that have to spend time and effort on those things. And so I wanted to acknowledge that there's some work there and some continuing work there, and there will be for a while as we work our way through that. So I think I'll stop there and see if people have any questions. And, you know, this is, you know, for your review, obviously, if there's... Hopefully, this gives you some sense of, you know, the things that we've done this year and give you some information that you can use to help as you think through the structure of the state's evaluation process. So there's, you know, some parts of it that are just standards-based. So you can think about other things we've talked about over the course of year or things you've seen or heard or whatever as far as the four standards and the particular indicators within those standards. But then also, in the performance section, you can look more specifically at these goals and what progress we've made on some of that. And some progress we haven't made. There's some, you know, I'll fully admit, there's some things I wish we'd done better and could do better and would like to do better. And, you know, we're still, even, you know, today, we're having conversations about how to get better at that work and how do we keep trying to improve the circumstance and experience for all the kids in all the buildings. Tom, have to answer any questions people have.
Sarah?
Thank you. I have a few questions, but I'll just start with goal one. And then maybe Sarah Besse, you want to go one goal at a time? I don't know. Up to you. All right. And this isn't meant to challenge you at all, but I'm curious because you've been the interim superintendent since, I think, August 31st, maybe. But you were also the acting superintendent for a couple of months earlier in the summer. So a lot of the artifacts you presented for the first goal was work that happened in August, in the in-between time when you were not the superintendent. So I wonder if you can say what role, if any, you had in planning or arranging for all that to happen? I mean, you said at the outset that this, you know, many people, it's not all you. It's many people, but I'm curious as to how you yourself have advanced this work.
Yeah, I think there was a fair amount of this that was outlined by the previous superintendent. You know, he was able to return from a medical leave in mid-July. And in the course of that, about six or seven weeks that he had before he left, you know, he really invested deeply into connecting with people and plugging into the sort of needs that we had and trying to do some forethought and planning with regard to this. But he also worked closely with, you know, our family center director, our student services director, so Marta Guavara, and Fay Brady, and our human resources staff, and thought about this deeply and outlined, you know, and also with some of the community. And he sort of, you know, got some feedback from folk and put together a pretty solid plan of action with that regard. I think in a lot of ways, there's a fair amount of this that was, for me, was much more about supporting and keeping it moving forward and continuing to promote the need to do this work and trying to, you know, kind of keep those circumstances in place that allowed for this to happen in some respects. There is a, you know, a good chunk of that that was, yeah, others' work, to be perfectly honest. And that's true across all of these, actually. So, you know, this is not different from that. And I think that also, we've tried to continue to look into, be aware of, and especially, you know, we did a fairly intensive amount of training on, in November, when we had our curriculum, not our curriculum, but our professional development day, you know, sometimes called a teacher work day. You know, we really tried to encourage as many staff as possible to be a part of that. We've continued to have those conversations and to, you know, promote that effort. So it's much more a supportive role for me in a lot of ways on this. And I think it also speaks to the strength and efforts of, you know, other directors and coordinators at the district level that help kind of support and carry this work forward, too.
Sarah, did you have a follow-up or...?
Well, I have questions related to other goals.
Okay. Are there any more goal one clarifying questions?
So I'm curious whether there were ongoing after the November professional development day, whether there were any formal or informal work being done with staff and, you know, teachers about these issues?
I think with staff, you know, there's a certain amount of this. It's about setting an expectation that, you know, afford staff to be able to have difficult conversations or to point things out to each other. I don't know that we necessarily had. A building level may have had some specific related work. I think there were. I can't recall explicitly which buildings necessarily. I know some buildings have done some additional work in their own professional development time, their own faculty meeting time. I think in the classroom level, you know, particularly at the elementary, the integration of restorative circles and restorative aspects gave them opportunity to have conversations about, you know, these topics, but then also other sort of bias and harassment kind of questions. So I think there's, that's been a part of their work for a while. And so this was, you know, another lens to bring to bear on that and on those kinds of conversations they had. I think more of the work, you know, in the course of the year was building-led and probably driven by needs in particular to the buildings.
Thank you. Yep, William and then...
I noticed that one of the artifacts for goal one was the gender support plan by gender spectrum. I didn't realize that that was something we were doing. Is that something they were doing correctly?
So we made it available to staff to use if a kid, you know, came forward with that. I mean, that gave us a frame of reference to, you know, to think about what are the kind of questions we need to think through with them. You know, and so I think it was helpful in that regard. Some of the materials that were shared with us and then we used, you know, we didn't create our own version of that. And at the same time, I think that if there were circumstances, that was an opportunity to leverage that tool, to kind of work through that. Do we formally, like, fill it out? I don't know that I've seen one filled out, but I think we used it.
It's a great tool.
Yeah.
I just didn't realize it was being implemented in the school. So that was just my question. Is it being implemented or is it just...?
Yeah, I think we made it available for folks to use. And it wasn't a directive as much as it was, here's a real resource. I think people recognized the value of that resource and so leveraged it to what they felt was appropriate for a given kid at a given age and development level. So I think it was, you know, there's some things were much more directive about this. We were probably less so that way, but I think it was a great resource. And I think people leaned into that resource.
Yeah, so first, I just thank you, Doug. This is a tremendous amount of work. And I think we all recognize, like, that you really, you know, let yourself be tagged in a really difficult moment for the district. So I want to put anything I say next in that context. I did share Sarah Marshall's concern that really the artifacts for goal one show a lot of just following the Mike Morris plan. And I know some of us on school committee felt frustrated throughout the year when we'd ask questions related to the goal. Like, it was unclear of it being an ongoing focus and priority outside the family meetings. And so I appreciate, like, if many staff were working on it. But I just think, like, in terms of communication back to this body, that we could be stronger in that regard. And also, within goal one, I just noticed on the bullying report plan, like, the bullying report data, that the in-process number, you provided us this document several times, and that in-process number stays consistently high, which just makes me worry about the turnaround time on it and the pace of it. And then just like as a personal thing that I'd be interested in, like, what's the pathways then for the ones that are not bullying or harassment? Like, there may still be disciplinary pathways there or accountability pathways of some sort. So all that's just of interest to me.
Right. So I think that there is a grid that you've seen throughout the year that sort of has the numbers for, and it's dated the 28th of May. I will say this. You know, the two that looked the highest were, of course, the high school and middle school. High school had like six. That, I think, is now at zero as far as in-process. I think some of those were duplicates. We've had some struggles with technology this year, which hasn't helped us at all. It's impeded progress. It's been difficult sometimes for people to submit. I think it's also, it's been, you know, problematic to work with as well. I would say at the middle school, it's showing a number like nine. That's, it's not zero yet. It's in-process. We're trying to, you know, we're battling a few different things, technology being one of them. I think some work's being done offline at this point, quite frankly, to do that. And I think that there is some of that that's more finished than not. We are going to, you know, work to resolve those fully. So I'll say that. Number two, I think I will fully admit, this is one area that I'm, I've personally been frustrated about. And I think there are several staff that have been. And I think that, you know, and frustrated on a number of different levels. Not because, you know, people are slacking off or not doing their work or whatever. It's just we have not made as much progress about being as timely with some of these as we really need to be. I think there are oftentimes actions taken and sometimes it's a matter of, you know, documenting that work. And I think we could just do better about the actions we need to take as far as the immediacy of it and being a little more in the moment with it. I think there are a lot, a lot of times, there are things that are happening and we've got to get back and sort of record what we've done. And that will guarantee and, you know, sort of, it'll demonstrate the efforts that people are making. But I would also say, I think we could be a lot better. And I think we can be a whole lot better at getting and attending to these in more timely ways. I think it's been difficult, you know, having a principal spread across two buildings. I think we've had some, you know, we've had some challenges with staffing, some new staffing in some of the areas that deal with this in a pretty critical way. And, you know, for all the things that, you know, give some reason as to why we haven't been on top of this, it still doesn't excuse the need to really be on top of this as much and as well as we have and should be. I think we've been better and yet not good enough, would be one way I'd describe it. The other thing I will say is this, is, and this is, we try to share this with everybody. And this is really true, you know, sort of regardless of sort of any type of conflict or disciplinary question that arises, and particularly in these kinds of questions, is that, you know, there's this sort of technical aspect of whether something is or isn't bullying or not. But regardless of whether it's officially, you know, meets the requirements of the definition by state law, et cetera, et cetera, there are consequences. There are actionable steps that are taken with kids in regard to dealing with these circumstances. So even in a circumstance where, you know, people are invested in their not being bullying or their being bullying, depending on which sort of side of this and what you think and your perceptions of this, I think the key thing to really remember sort of at the core of this is we're trying to find and identify and take action relative to what's appropriate for those students to either support them, change behavior, understand behavior, all those different components, and it's very specific to all the students. So we do have action consequence relative to those and scaled appropriately for any given individual student, whether they're on the sort of receiving or perpetrating end of some sort of conflict like this. And whether it's a bullying circumstance or not, we try to take that approach relative to how we deal with discipline and behavior. You know, the number of things we have for actual disciplinary things we can do is very small. What we're much more focused on is what is the right behavior? How can we teach better behaviors? How can we do repair work with folks and get them to have, you know, meaningful conversations and thoughtfulness as they make decisions in the future, that kind of thing? So I think even, you know, regardless of outcome on a, on this sort of spreadsheet, I think that the thing to know is that we're invested in all the kids that are involved and the adults involved to make sure we're doing better by everyone as best we can. We kind of keep working on that. That's part of the work of the district in and around that. But I will say, you know, there's a lot of room for improvement here. I think we could be a lot better at that. I'm hoping that as we get a little more stable in our staffing over the coming year, we'll be better able to do that work. You know, I think we improved a little bit this year, and I think we've got a long way to go. And we've got some efforts we need to still make there.
William?
So it says on goal one, modify the online bullying reporting system to allow for the reporting of harassment concerns? I feel that harassment was just added to the form, but in the form, there's not a place to talk about harassment. And then bullying and harassment, as a person who has received reports back, it just says, no found of bullying. They never really talk about the harassment piece. And so when we have the data that comes to us on the bullying harassment data, it just has bullying harassment. It says seven? That's really not accurate because it's just bullying seven and not bullying fifteen. There's no, there should be a separate column for harassment. And I have never seen a bully form that's been turned around to say it's not bullying, but it was harassment. I've only seen it say, no bullying. But I could be wrong because that's my limited view.
Right. And I think that's an area where, again, where I think some more improvement in that is warranted. I think that, you know, one of the things that, and again, I think our, you know, our technology wasn't helpful in that regard this year because I think we would like to have refined it a little bit more during the year, but we were just struggling with it to function well at times. And so that kind of limited us a little bit. But I think that that idea of adding harassment as a choice and then have the narrative and then investigate that. And some of the, you know, one of the conversations we're having with our legal counsel a little bit about process is that if you're in, you know, whether you're in like a Title IX or a Title VI or some other kind of harassment category, the steps you take are a little different than you would in the bullying. And so what happens if it's both? And, you know, there's a few different decision trees you have to sort of follow and set up. And so, you know, that's, that is certainly an area of improvement, I think. And I think we've continued to lean on it mostly in forms of bullying. I think if there were circumstances of harassment, I think we probably pulled that and investigated separately, which of course then doesn't show up on the reports the way you would want it to. We are looking at some different tools to capture this data a little differently. So we're hoping to be a little more nuanced as we move ahead because I think we've got similar concerns about what we capture and... So we're hoping to be a little more nuanced as we move ahead, because I think we've got, um, similar concerns about what we've captured and not captured and, and how we capture it. And, and also, you know, if, if we, if we capture, it, it then can lead our, our staff in the right direction as far as next steps. You know, what are the right next steps we have to take and help us with, with the sort of workflow that we need to go through that. And, um, yeah, I think that's, that's certainly an area that, that is, is an area of, of, of need and continuing improvement we need to do here for, for sure.
I was, it's kind of related to that same question, asking about the difference between bullying and harassment. And then just being a little bit surprised at the small percentage of cases where bullying or harassment. And now it seems like it's just bullying that was found to be occurring in these. So of the, seven of the twenty-eight were found to be actual cases of bullying. And fifteen were either not nothing or not harassment or bullying or just not bullying. It's not totally clear. And so I was just, you know, trying to get my, wrap my head around why so many cases were deemed not. And what are the other reports then? Are they just kids reporting stuff that wasn't true? Are they reports of kids that are reporting really minor incidents that don't really amount to what an adult would classify as actual harassment? Or is harassment and bullying, or is bullying a very strict definition? And harassment only counted towards sexual harassment and?